All right, thank you, and welcome to the February 11th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to stand. Thank you very much, everybody. Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Christ.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting, so if each person would please confirm that they can see, hear, or both when asked, please do so. Mr. Vaughn.
Both.
Mrs. Brats.
Both.
Mrs. Carpus.
Both.
Mr. Christ.
Both.
Dr. Smilak.
Both.
Mr. Nucio.
Both.
And John Schweitzer is also both. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. Board members and administration, if at any time during the meeting you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with the amended substitute House Bill 197, as well as House Bill 404, as more specifically detailed on the notice attached to tonight's agenda. With that, I move to adopt Resolution 210266, suspending requirement for in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second for Resolution 20210266. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Resolution 20210266 has been approved. Hey, sleeper. Information to the board, Dr. Smilak.
Yeah, several items, and I appreciate the opportunity. First, our vaccination dates are set for our employees. We are looking forward and feel very fortunate to be able to receive the vaccination, obviously ahead of other folks who obviously have the same, if not more, need than us, but we feel fortunate that the governor has allowed educators to proceed with the vaccines. Our dates are tomorrow, I'm sorry, tomorrow, our dates are not tomorrow. Our dates are Monday, actually President's Day, the 15th, and then we also go back on March 8th. So we look forward to being able to vaccinate. We have approximately 75% of our staff that will receive the vaccination through these opportunities. This will certainly be one step toward looking at a full open. There are other steps. We continue to quarantine very large numbers of staff and students, and so that's a concern. We also have to make sure that we get our parents' buy-in. Our parents are an important factor in this. We opened the second semester under a very certain, specific set of circumstances in terms of what, you know, different county colors meant. So to change the plan and really look at bringing students back full go before we would be yellow, you know, that's going to require a little bit of feedback and buy-in from our parents as well. We know that our teachers continue to work hard. Their role in this process is important, too. We want to have those conversations about the how and how that can best be met. I also wanted to comment on several resolutions this evening. The first will be in the human resources part of the night. We have two resolutions that will abolish two positions. One is the Chief Operating Officer. The second is Administrative Specialist for Human Resources. We will actually combine those into one position. It'll be the Executive Director for Human Resources and Operations. Just want to make sure that I always, these are always difficult. We highly respect and like the people in those positions. Right now, this is not personal. It's not about their position or their performance in the position. It really is about fiscal responsibility. When you add this reduction, along with the DIS reduction that we've worked through, worked through at the last board meeting, we're saving approximately $200,000 from the actual operating budget per year. Of that, we will have a $50,000 line item. The board will be approving this shortly. Mr. Nucio is working through sort of the mechanics of this, but it's a $50,000 allotment specifically for students in the arts. We will call it the Parma Arts Innovation Reserve, and this will be for innovative experiences or projects or programs in the arts. And we want to make sure that we really, the arts is something in our district that we're proud of, and yet we know there's much room for improvement. And so part of the way we're going to fund that improvement is through the type of consolidation that you see this evening. So it always comes with the human toll. As I said, this is not a reflection upon the individuals in those positions right now, but rather the continued desire to make sure that as many resources as possible are in our schools, and also to stave off an operating levy for as long as we can possibly stave it off. We know that we have a bond issue on in May. We want to make sure that we can space asks for new taxes as much as we can for our population in our communities. The final piece is that we have removed Resolution 2021-02-71. This resolution dealt with the daycare. At First Step, it is important to make sure that people understand that we're not, this resolution would not have closed First Step. First Step is the preschool programming, the educational aspect of it, and we're very proud of what we offer. In fact, we want to expand First Step, and a part of that expansion is being able to have the room to do so, room right now that is taken by daycare programs that, quite frankly, just aren't physically responsible at this point. For years, they have run in the red. We have subsidized those programs from EDC, which is Extended Daycare, at our schools, before and after-school care, and we simply don't have the funding to do that anymore. And again, we want to use this space for educational programs, to expand First Step, have more peer models, a better continuum of services. We would like to offer potentially even a preschool version of ACES in the space that would become available. However, we know that there were a large number of comments that we received in the last, really, 24 hours or so. Our Board of Education, rightfully so, asked to be able to do, to respond to those folks with as much information as possible. There's some questions that the board is going to have for me that I'll provide the answers to. So I know we will have further conversation about that, but that resolution is indeed removed for this evening. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, Dr. Smilak. Any other information to the board this evening? Seeing none, communications, Mrs. Carpus.
I have just two. One, if anybody has not had the opportunity yet, if you visit the district's Facebook page, there is an order form for Sword and Shield for, I believe it's February 25th is the pickup. They have several different soups, banana breads, all kinds of things you can order. The pickup is very streamlined. You drive up, you pick up outside of Normandy. There was one in January, too, that went out, went amazingly. So if anybody is interested in not having to cook that night, it's an excellent opportunity to showcase our students' talents in the kitchen. The other thing is March 5th, I believe. Dr. Smilak, is that the correct date for the pierogi dinner?
It's the first Friday in March. I'll double check, but I think it is the 5th.
It is March 5th.
Perfect. That is the pierogi dinner, and you can visit any of the Partners in Education sites to coordinate to order tickets and purchase tickets for that. I think that's all I got for today.
Thank you very much. Treasurer?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any amendments this evening?
We do not.
Okay. At this point, and I will reemphasize something that Dr. Smilak had just talked about, at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items, and several things were sent in regarding the one agenda item, I forget the number now, but that Dr. Smilak is 20210271?
Yes, 02-71.
It has been removed, so those, it's no longer an agenda item, so it cannot be read as the public, in this public, pardon, excuse me, in this public participation part. However, I will read those into the record at the end of the meeting. With that, approval of the Record of Proceedings, I move to adopt Resolution 20210268, approval of the written Record of Proceedings from the January 28th, regular January 28th, 2021, and February 2nd, 2021, Special Board of Education Meetings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adopt Resolution 20210268. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Resolution 20210268 has been approved.
Curriculum, Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of stuff written. I'm all over this thing today. Curriculum, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-69, granting authority for, to the administration to enter into a contract with a family during the 2020, 2021, and 2021, and 2022 school year. Second.
I have a motion and a second for Resolution 20210269. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210269 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-70, granting authority to the administration to modify a contract entered with the family during the 2019, 2021 school year. Second.
I have a motion and a second for 20210270. Any questions or comments? I'm reading 2021-
Is this supposed to be 2020, 2021, not 2019?
Or was it a contract from 2019 to 2021?
That's correct. It was originally signed in 2019.
Oh, okay. I was just confused by that.
It will stay as read then.
Correct.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210270 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this concludes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. Business, Mr. Christ?
There are no items under business tonight. If any board member has anything to discuss?
No, seeing none. Finance, Mr. Christ.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-72, a resolution to designate the treasurer CFO of the Parma City School District Board of Education to attend the required public records training as amended by state law.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210272. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Patty Anderson, she's the one that put them-
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210272 has been approved. Thank you, Sean.
On the back of his door.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-73, approval to enter into an agreement with Julian and Grubb for month-end cash balance reconciliation with a period of August 1st, 2020, through January 31st, 2021.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210273. Questions or comments?
Sean, could you say a couple words about this?
Sure. We had a former employee who was working on the bank reconciliations, and she retired, and Tracy Denard took over for her as, in this position. The bank reconciliation, I think it's overly complex here at Parma. I don't think it's hard, much harder than it needs to be. And so I want to hire Julian Group to finish the reconciliations, revise the documents we do, and do some training with this employee, Tracy Denard, so it can be done more efficiently and effectively.
Perfect.
And also, I'm hearing some weird noises.
I am, too.
Can we, I texted her, but she's not seeing it. Can we mute Tammy's iPhone, please?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Tammy? Hanslick?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, God, I am so sorry.
Okay, if you can just mute Tammy, that'd be great.
Tell me, Smol.
Oh, my God.
Any other discussion on Resolution 20210273?
No.
Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 20210273 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-74, approval of the January 2021 financial report.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210274. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210274 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-75, ratification of investments.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210275. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 20210275 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-76, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210276. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210276 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-02-77, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
Motion and a second for 20210277. Questions or comments?
I would like to thank Mr. Kish from Parma Area Chamber of Commerce for the donation, and the Coyote County Library for their donation. It's always very nice if people remember Parma City Schools when they, when they give. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yeah, ditto on that. And thank you for always being willing to mention that. Mr. Vaughn, any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210277 has been approved.
Unless another, a board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christ. We move to legislation. Is there any report on legislation this evening?
I just have one quick thing for you. I just want to make sure I give you the right Senate Bill number. Okay. I'm going to give you a little quote first. This pandemic has put all students under an immeasurable amount of stress. Even students have been able to return to in-person instruction. No student should be held back or prevented from graduating because of that. Teachers have been able to rise to countless challenges related to the pandemic, and it's time we trust them to provide more accurate assessment of their student's success. That is from State Senator Teresa Fedor in relation to Senate Bill 37, which is to eliminate state testing for the duration of the school year. There is much support for it, and I would hope that anybody who has some free time would reach out to their legislators and tell them that you support Senate Bill 37 for our kids, because I absolutely, wholeheartedly believe that our teachers are the best assessment for those kids.
Thank you very much. Another ditto there. That's great to hear.
And that is the only thing I have today.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Human Resources, Mrs. Brats.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 20210278, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 20210278. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210278 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 20210279, abolishment of Chief Operating Officer position.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210279. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Charlie, are you going to mention, are you going to talk about both these next two resolutions, or did you already?
I did in the beginning. I can reiterate.
Yeah, just, just to refresh our memory, sorry.
Yeah, again, so we're, you know, we really sort of started this process when we started here, and so we've always looked to try to be as lean and efficient at the central office as possible, and this is, you know, a consolidation that's going to allow us to save money and at the central office, also invest some of that money into an arts innovation reserve that we'll talk about at a future board meeting. Both of these individuals, as we've referenced multiple times, are, you know, great people. It's not about them. It's not about, you know, their job performance. It's about trying to be as efficient as possible. We're going to replace the Human Resources Administrative Specialist and the Chief Operating Officer with one person, and that one person will be the Executive Director of Human Resources and Operations. All of the departments that currently report to the Chief Operating Officer, so you have security, you have transportation, you have nutrition, you have DIS, all of those will report actually to the Executive Director, as well as Human Resources. Mr. Hoy stays in his position. He will be the day-to-day go-to in terms of Human Resources needs, but the Executive Director will be largely responsible for strategizing, organizing those departments, making sure that we really have, have better processes and procedures in place for all things Human Resources, as that area continues to evolve and become much, much more intricate than I think people probably realize. So again, it's, it's not, you know, an easy move. It's not a, one that we don't do without a lot of respect and consideration for the folks in those roles, but from an economic efficiency standpoint, as well as what we think can be a good synergy between those departments, we're making these recommendations.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you again, very much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Excuse me. Yes. 20210279 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 20210280, creation of Executive Director of Human Resources and Operations position and adoption of job description.
Second.
We have a motion-
I was reading.
We have a motion and a second for 20210280. Questions or comments?
I do have one quick question. Did we, I don't know, Charlie, I apologize if you said this. Did we set what the salary for this position will be, or is that come later?
The Executive Director comes later, but it's on the senior leadership team scale, which has already been established, so it's within-
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210280 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 20210281, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence, approval of classified stipend.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210281. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210281 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 20210282, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
A motion and a second for 20210282. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210282 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 20210283, confirmation of classified administrative specialist appointment replacement.
Second.
Second.
You're falling asleep over there.
0283. Any questions or comments from the board?
Can I, can I make a comment, Mr. Schweitzer?
Sure.
Really, I'm excited for this gentleman. He is, I believe he's a Normandy grad. I know he's Parma City Schools. Normandy is correct, if anybody knows and wants to correct. Gary is really a brilliant guy. In his spare time, he audits classes from MIT. He's been a technician for us. I don't know exactly how many years, but he's been here for some years, distinguished himself, certainly in terms of intellect, but also in terms of work ethic. It's just always great to promote from within. It's great to, you know, see Parma City Schools graduate on a career track and a career ladder with us. So very excited. Gary will have the very important functions of overseeing the network and making sure it doesn't crash. And I couldn't tell you the first thing about how he's going to do that, but Gary knows how to do it, and we're excited to promote him this evening.
Yeah, I had Gary for physics class a bunch of years ago, and he is a very, very smart kid. And I tell you, when we first started getting our technology with the iPads and stuff, I leaned on that kid a couple of times, just to be able to show what I was looking on my iPad up on the screen. But he was very good, very helpful, very nice kid, very deserving of this position. I'm sure he'll do very well. Nice young man.
Yeah, that's good. I'll have to look for him when I'm monitoring a class at MIT.
Take a picture so we can see you there, John.
Laughter? Seriously? Okay. Any other-
Oh, that wasn't a joke.
Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 20210283, and I will also extend my congratulations at this point to Gary. Sounds like an extremely qualified individual, and welcome aboard.
Ditto. I move for the adoption of Resolution 20210284, approval of classified administrative appointments.
Second.
Motion and a second for 20210284. Questions or comments?
If I could comment on this one, too, Mr. Schweitzer?
Go ahead.
Also, very excited about this change. You know, we talked in the last meeting about losing Drew Stevens to a different school district, and certainly Drew's an extremely talented individual, but we have not missed a beat, and we haven't missed a beat because Dan Gideon and his team have picked up. Dan was in a slightly reduced role below Drew. Now he's really taking over the entire DIS system, and Dan is, is well-respected throughout the district for his knowledge, for his work ethic as well, and just wanted to thank him for really helping us to reorganize his department, really on the fly. Mr. Stevens' resignation was, was relatively unexpected, and Dan has just been a great go-to. We have, as I said, you know, consolidating DIS was part of the way we're saving $200,000. We didn't really replace Drew. We're replacing him essentially with a tech that we'll add. So this, this is just great, great testament to internal talent, and again, we're very excited for Dan and very grateful for all of his support through this process. He will do a phenomenal job, and we're excited to work with him in this new role.
Yeah, I'm excited for Dan. He is a, is a great quality person, and will definitely do that job. He's built for it, so to speak.
He is also a, he has the-
He is. Also, he has the most adorable daughter, Hadley, and he is a wonderful, very active dad with her, and truly just, I mean, part of the community. I see him out everywhere.
If I could add, when I first came on the board, I met with Drew, and I've known for years, but he was, you know, describing many different parts about the BIS department, and he could not say enough good stuff about Dan Gideon. He just talked and talked and talked about all of his skills, how talented, the kind of person he is. And that was before this, you know, change was coming about. And so I'm excited to welcome Dan as well into his new position.
And I will also chime in. Dan, congratulations and welcome. Well deserved. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, Mr. Nusio.
This is Bratz.
Yes.
This is Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-0284 has been approved. It's now official. Congratulations, Dan.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0285, abolishment of Administrative Specialist of Human Resource Specialist position.
Second.
A motion and a second for 2021-0285. Questions or comments? This goes with the whole.
COO part and everything else.
Yeah, that we've talked about as far as, you know, reconsolidating and moving people around into different positions. I like it. So, any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Nusio.
This is Bratz.
Yes.
This is Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-0285 has been approved.
Well, unless any other board members have anything to discuss this evening, this concludes Human Resources.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bratz. Any policies this evening, Mrs. Carpus?
No, we do not have anything. No, sorry.
That's fine. Any other information requested this evening from board members?
No, but I actually forgot something in Communications. Can I have two quick minutes?
Take them.
So as some of you might have seen, Mr. Gorman and his team Nutrition Services were awarded the Summer Feeding Program of 2020. We served the most meals in Northeast Ohio. Bob and his team are approaching 1 million meals served in March.
Oh.
1,800 pallets of food in addition to what the district, the bags that the kids get, 1,800 pallets of additional food. This past week, we were able to, the award was given to Bob and the team. I was there. I was able to give a few words. And one of the very shocking statistics is when you break down the national, the state, the county, and then by city, the number of people experiencing food insecurity within the Parma City School, three cities, 5,500 people or approximately 2,220 families are experiencing food insecurity. And so the work that they have done has helped those families. And just the sheer number, I cannot get over that number, almost a million meals. And it was very, it was very powerful to see the change that, you know, we've made in the community. I want to read really quickly these comments that were, I'm gonna try not to cry. So I read these to the staff the other day. "These are the only hot meals she eats. I sobbed as I unpacked the food. My children have never had fresh fruit. Thank you for giving my son his first experience eating something he grew. We have never had this much food in our house at one time." Those are some of the things that people say after their lives have been changed by being recipients of this food. So the work that they are continuing to do, and I had to stop when sports and school and everything picked back up. My mom duties overrode my ability to be there during the day. So I had to stop. But these folks are still out there in the rain, in the snow, in the cold, twice a week, passing out this food, and they are just absolutely incredible, and they deserve so much more than a plaque. And, you know, I just, they really deserve this. And on February 25th, during the day, and everyone will get, all the board members will get a link, Fox 8 from noon to 1:00 will be running, it's called Program of Hope, and the program, the food distribution program and the award and everything will be featured on there. And it'll be recorded so everybody can watch it at their own, you know, timetable and stuff like that. So you guys will all get a chance to see all of that.
Well, that's outstanding. Very good. Thank you for sharing that.
I'm glad you brought it up, and it took the few minutes to explain that. That is amazing, quite honestly. And congratulations to you two. You were out there, I know your mom duties had to take over, but you were out there for many, many, many times. And congratulations to everybody. Well deserved. Anything else? Okay. Any other information requested by board members? Well, now we come to new questions and concerns to be read into the record. And as I said at the beginning of the meeting, since the daycare was pulled as a resolution, it was no longer an agenda item, so these could not be read at the beginning. However, several have met the qualifications to be read into the record at this point, and I will read them verbatim as they, you know, not in any particular order. I wasn't able to, I didn't even have the time, quite honestly, before the meeting to try to run these off or anything. So bear with me as I read them, you know, from my iPad. Our first one is from Caitlin Poole, 19674 North Sagamore Road, Fairview Park. "On Thursday, February 11th, 2021, at 5:55 PM," Caitlin Poole wrote the following. "I have just seen the agenda for tonight's board meeting. I would like to advocate for keeping the daycare program open. It has been running since 1983. Why can't we just change our charge more per child in order to make more money and self-sustain? I would write a longer email, but it is nearly 6:00 PM. Please consider the families that would be affected, the employees who have dedicated their careers for not much pay to take care of these children, and the abolishment of a least restrictive environment for our special needs preschool students in the building. In my opinion, this daycare is a bragging point and should be kept." Next. This is from Kathleen. If I don't pronounce these right, I apologize. Petkac. She is at 7642 Allen Parkway in Middleburg Heights, Ohio. "To whom it may concern, I am extremely disappointed at the discussion of abolishing the Pleasant View Preschool Childcare Program that is taking place this evening. I'm in tears as I write this because of what an amazing piece of the community you are taking away. My son has gone through the program since infant room and is now thriving in kindergarten. I am so blessed that even in the midst of a pandemic, my daughter is now in the infant room with the same teachers and experience what my son did six years ago. The teachers alone are saints. They, to this day, have come to my son's out-of-school activities to support and cheer him on. They spent the time off during the pandemic making crafts, activities, and gifts to drop off at our house on their personal time to let us know they are thinking of us and miss us terribly. The same thing many elementary, middle school, and high school teachers did during the pandemic, and they're not losing their jobs or schools being closed. Why is the childcare teachers not being commended on the amazing things that they have been doing each and every day? Their job is so important to us parents. The smile on my infant daughter's face every morning she sees those teachers is so heartwarming as a parent because I know she wants to be there and she is being loved. I currently have coworkers of mine in the district who have added their name to the waitlist for next year because of how highly I ever recommended the place. The teachers and center are so important to our children as well as to the community and district. Please reconsider." This is Mark Calamante. Again, I apologize if I am butchering the name. 28302 West Oviet Road, Bay Village, Ohio, 44140. "I was lucky enough to have two of my children attend Pleasant View, and it would be a shame if it was forced to close its doors. We brought our children from Cleveland and even after we moved to Bay Village because the care and quality of teachers and staff were simply outstanding. The care and accessibility make Pleasant View a necessity in the community. Please do not close the school for the sake of the children, parents, faculty, and staff." This is Ashley Hanola, 28302 West Oviet Road, Bay Village. "As a parent of several students who attended the EDC program at Pleasant View School, I wanted to take a moment to let you know how much the early childhood education program has meant to our family. I reside and work in Bay Village, and up until the mandatory closures in March 2020, I drove all the way down to the southernmost region of Parma to drop my children off at Pleasant View and then drove all the way back to my neighborhood to go to work. And then I made the same trip every evening in rush hour traffic every single day. I did this because no other child, early childhood center could live up to what the Parma School Daycare Center provided. The staff within are unparalleled. Their commitment and dedication is unmatched. Nowhere else would I find the type of staff that I felt comfortable leaving my high-needs infant with. Nowhere else did I feel confident sending my other son, a physically delayed child, either. I cried when I gave birth to my only daughter this past summer as I sent out texts to the staff of Pleasant View announcing her birth and realized that she could not follow in her brother's footstep and have the opportunity to be cared for by the wonderful staff of Pleasant View due to the uncertainty of school closures related to the pandemic. My relationship with the early childhood program goes back, it goes back a ten-two when the center was housed at Parkview School. The majority of the staff has been the same for decades because they truly and wholeheartedly care about the differences they make in families' lives. I could go on forever about how fantastic this program is and how much it means to countless families, but alas, I will end this correspondence here, heartbroken." This is from Allison Meyer, 33340 East Nimrod Street, Solon, Ohio. "To whom it may concern, when I read the resolution for the abolishment of the Parma City School District Pleasant View Preschool Childcare Program, my eyes became tearful and my heart became heavy. These teachers were strangers five years ago, but now have become family. My oldest, five, middle, three, and youngest, one, all experienced the love, care, compassion, and education that the teachers of Pleasant View daycare provide. As I think back through the years of my children's time at the daycare, I feel love and gratitude. My mind flashed back to when my son was in the toddler room and he had what looked like a, I'm gonna just spell it out so I don't mispronounce. F-E-B-R-I-L-E, Fabril seizure. It actually happened three years ago this week. I will never forget that phone call when I was a target on a community-based experience trip with my own students. But it was because of the care and compassion that I knew he would be well taken care of until I could meet him at the emergency room. My mind also flashed back to when my daughter was in the infant room, and Ms. Penny brought to my attention that there were red dots and some bruising forming on my daughter's legs. I brought her to the doctor, and her blood results indicated she was developing a blood disorder. I am forever grateful for the attentiveness and concern for my little girl. I am sharing these stories because they are prime examples of how much these teachers care about my children as if they were their own. These teachers and staff are important to young children. Parma's children, Parma City School District teachers' children, our children. This district needs a safe, caring environment where parents and teachers feel safe, leaving their babies while they go to work and teach other children. Pleasant View daycare is a bright spot to the community and needs the opportunity to thrive and be the safe and happy place for our children. Please reconsider the abolishment of Pleasant View daycare. Thank you for your time." Okay. Stay with me here. This is Ashley Hanola.
No.
Right?
Carrie Hall.
Huh?
Carrie Hall.
I have, my next one here is, it says Ashley, from Ashley Hanola.
You've read that one, John.
No. Okay, I got some of these three times. Okay, sorry. That's Mark. I already did that one. Carrie Hall. We're trying to find it here. Caitlin. Kathleen. I hope I didn't lose it somehow.
What's the name?
Carrie Hall.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find it on my stuff too, but I can't.
I had it here before. Here, I got it. I don't have the address.
It's from Solon.
Oh, I thought we read that one in the very beginning.
You did. Solon one anyway.
No, we read Fairview Park.
Yeah, this is, I am not an outstanding outspoken person, but it doesn't have an address on here. If you have the address.
I don't know.
I'm sorry for the.
8455 Chesapeake Drive, Sagamore Hills, 44067.
Okay. Can you say that once more, and you'll be the official address giver?
Okay. 8455 Chesapeake Drive, Sagamore Hills, Ohio, 44067.
Thank you very much. This is from Carrie Hall. "To whom it may concern, I am not an outspoken person by nature, though as I age, I find I need and am more willing to speak up for things that matter, even when it makes me uncomfortable. When I looked at the board agenda and read a resolution for the abolishment of Parma City School District Pleasant View Preschool Childcare Program, I knew this was one of those moments. I am a teacher at Parma Park and have taught in Parma for 10 years. I have three children who attend Pleasant View and have happily taken my oldest, Everly, there, excuse me, for almost five years now. I have very little family, and none that live closer, who are able to help my husband and I with childcare. Finding childcare, leaving the little people who carry a part of your heart outside of your body with someone who isn't you or isn't your family, is anxiety-inducing for anyone, as I am sure some people reading this can attest. My husband and I went to great lengths and circumstances to have a family. That still doesn't make it harder for us than for someone who did not to find great childcare, but it may have made me a little more neurotic about it. I originally had chosen an at-home babysitter, but had put my name on the list for Everly to attend Pleasant View on recommendation of two women I worked with who couldn't rave enough about it. A week before we went back to work, I was called with an opening, and we made the decision to switch her to Pleasant View. Over the last five years, I have come to know the ladies who work at and care for all the children at Pleasant View. I don't have even an inkling of a bad word to say about any of them. In fact, some have even babysat for me in my home because I trust them wholeheartedly with my children. This year has been trying, and I know that I am not unique in that this pandemic has affected me and my family. Working from home and teaching virtually with three little needy people and trying to find help while Pleasant View has been closed has been difficult, to say the least." I would be lying if I didn't say the thought crossed my mind about how it might be easier to check out other childcare facilities that wouldn't be closed when I still need to work, but the thought was dismissed almost as soon as it popped into my head. I, and I know others, are very attached to this daycare. Aside from it being convenient for teachers, Pleasant View, and the people who run it are so needed, not just for the convenience, but because these ladies who care for our little people are so truly amazing. Mom guilt is real. Every time I have to get ready to take my kids back after a break and go to work, I feel it more than ever, but this feeling has always been squelched, knowing that my children are in the caring hands of all the ladies who work there. Pleasant View has become a little family for me. It has been the cornerstone to repressing any anxiety about leaving my children and making me feel comfortable knowing they are in the best of hands. I hope that with this message, I am just able to voice a need for the wonderful ladies who work at and run Pleasant View and take care of our babies so that we can teach our children, other children. I realize my saying so is not a final factor in any decisions that are made, but I would kick myself if I didn't speak up for this amazing facility and the lovely ladies who have done so much for my family, along with countless others. The thought of having to vet other facilities and people to care for my children is not one I want to truly have to consider. Please, please reconsider this. As a parent and teacher in person, I tell you that Pleasant View is a necessity that can thrive here if you let it, without rushing into a decision to close simply because enrollment may be down due to a national pandemic. Please keep this amazing facility open, or you would be doing a disservice to many. Thank you for your time and consideration. Carrie Hall. Are there any others?
No.
That's it, right? All right. And I, everybody that has communicated, these are the people that we read into the record tonight. I know myself and other board members, and I'm sure the superintendent has also received some, you know, personal correspondence that addresses the same issues. And as was mentioned earlier, that is why it is not on tonight's agenda. So in a, in answer to all five of these that were read, or it's not really an answer, but just to let you know that we obviously have decided to look into this, you know, to investigate a little bit and do our due diligence as far as, you know, considering the future of the daycare. And with that, you know, I will tell all of the people that have written that we will be communicating with you, and we will, you know, keep things as much in front of all of us as possible as we move forward in making this decision. Thank you again. With that, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0287 to adjourn this meeting.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-0287. Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-0287 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.